Good afternoon and welcome to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three school board meeting. I'd like to welcome Luke Hanners from Madison County High School. He's an eleventh grader. He will be delivering a prayer followed by the pledge. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Please bow your heads.
Good morning, thank you for today. Thank you for all the new invited members here. Please help them to make good decisions that will help us in just a minute.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start off by thanking the board for gathering together today at twelve o'clock. Mrs. Joseph and I will be going to Orlando after this meeting, so therefore we had to change the time of the meeting. Today we have a presentation by the Madison County, from the Madison County High School. Mr. Brooks?
Hello, Ms. Joseph and distinguished board members. How you guys doing?
Welcome.
How are you?
All right. Well, we were told we were going to have to present to you. The understanding was we were going to present on where Madison County High School is right now. And we are in pretty good shape. Current enrollment looks to be about four seventy-five, four eighty plus rates. And we will get the presentation, I guess you have the presentation in front of you. Everybody have a copy?
They will. We're gonna have it up there also.
Okay, we're gonna have it behind you also.
But I'm gonna send you a hard copy. We're gonna pass it down.
We are entering out a window of progress monitor. The one thing I realized, progress monitoring, some of the students behind me have a good understanding of what it is. A lot of our students don't. I think it's another task. But I've been, and my staff have been trying to get through to them that this is a tool that God's teaching us. A tool that gets us to understand what we know and what we don't. So we, we are getting to that point where our students really value it and take it seriously. Our test scores we looked at in the previous year and even this year indicate their gaps and engagement. What we're doing as a staff, our professional development is guided by those gaps and engagement. We want, you know, instead of having sit and gets or talk, you know, chocolate talks, we want it to be engaged in the content. Give us feedback, not regurgitating, thorough feedback. If you're getting into, take some point. If you're getting into a conversation about civil rights movement, we wanted to look at the key figures of these civil rights movements, just so Martin Luther King. Let's have a conversation about the maker of everything, or even conversations about, even going back with Pleasant Brooks and Ferguson. So thorough conversations that link and guide the curriculum and the standards together. So in doing that, and there's a great book that I've seen in the past, we want to talk about fundamental principles. These are the fundamentals that guide inclusive instruction with your students. And it talks about a lesson frame, which is important. Simple lesson frame that would be on any board, be on a small board, that would tell your students about what they're doing today. What, what is a task we want to accomplish today? You know, where does my instruction line with the standard? Because that's what we want, standard-based instruction, standard-based teaching. You can never call it, you know, talk, teach to the test. We're, we're teaching the standard at its best. And then also, it also tells us how we're gonna grade what, what has been taught today. Where's our measure? How much did it learn? So these are the things that we're looking at. And it's a great book, I won't go into detail because this is a long presentation. Sports update, we are starting our, our winter-spring sports, baseball. We've gone practicing, we're looking forward to it. And, you know, talking to people who've been having conversations about our football team and it hasn't, you know, had, wasn't as good this year, it has been in the past, but I can tell you not. We will get back to that. We're putting together a staff that is a great teaching and coaching staff. Not just coaching, is a teaching and coaching staff. Because some of our best memories are some of my coaches and they still are. That's why a couple of people still call me Coach Brooks, because I think it's an endearing name. And there's a lot of coaches that I've worked with, worked over, that have had a lot of, I don't wanna say power, but over those kids, influenced over those kids more than I, and I love them. So, but we're gonna get back to that, those winning ways, we're gonna get back to those academic success ways and athletics. Now, in this presentation, I'm the type of administrator that likes you to hear from, but hear from the kids' mind. And we're gonna have to do some skipping today because I found out one of my young ladies is also a tutor. So you're gonna hear from, if you go to Beta Club real quick, then we'll go back to this. We're gonna skip to Beta Club, and I'm gonna bring Hope to you right now. Hope is a member of our Beta Club, she's gonna tell you a little bit about Beta. We're gonna touch on our clubs and CTE programs, CTE programs, which is a large part of what we do. Yes, athletics is, but our CTA, CTE programs are very strong. So I want you to hear it from our students, and, and there are a lot of proud students behind me, and I'm so pleased with every last one of them that took the time to show up today. We have two that are coming, so, you know, don't look at them when they come in because I know they're probably gonna be embarrassed. But they're, they're in class, they were in class doing what they're supposed to do. So, but we're gonna bring Hope up here, and Hope has to get back to her tutor session, she's gonna tell you a little bit about Beta.
Hi, my name is Hope Horn, I'm in the eleventh grade, I'm a chaplain of the MTA Beta Club. This year we have been really busy. In October, eight of our officers attended the National Beta Club Regional Leadership Summit and the Brain Convention. In addition to attending sessions to strengthen our leadership skills, we have also competed in two events, collaboration connection and project proposal. Because of our performance in these competitions, we have qualified to compete at the National Beta Club Convention this summer in Lexington, Kentucky. We also were named an outstanding leadership school. Next, next week, sixteen of our Beta members will attend the State Beta Club Convention in Orlando. Four of all sixteen members will compete in various individual group events, Spanish, English, creative writing, speech, book battle, robotics, digital arts, third. To express our sincere thanks to you for allowing us and helping us to attend these events. Any student who places in the top three will be eligible to compete at the National Convention this summer. So far this year, we have moved our clothes closet to a small room in the media center and it says currently it's still so simple. We have given away pants, shirts, sweaters, coats, shoes, socks, personal hygiene items, etiquette to students, staff, staff members, student family members, community members in need. We have installed clothes racks, but this week we hope to install even more to accommodate all the donated items. This is still a work in progress, but we are very pleased about it so far. Three of our little three libraries have been rebuilt by one of our fan members who used this project to get his Eagle Scout medal. We want to begin a little pre-librarian for Madison Nursing Home, and we also want to partner with the nursing home residents to become their volunteers. Our project for the spring has to, is to have a blood drive that Miss Monica backed memory. And we also hope to restart our school recycling project. Last week we will visit at least one more university. In November, we traveled to the land and attended Stepson University's open house. After the event, we attended the football game to support R.G. Williams and Zarian Robbins and poor recalcitrant our panel at Stepson Football Team. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Like I said, Hope has the prime gauge she has to get to, she's a tutor essential, so she's gonna get to that. Next, we'll, if you can, we're gonna go back to health science, CT, go back to our CT programs. We will start with health science, some of you may call it nursing, you know, it is a health science program. I come from a rich program down south that I'm proud to say, do not be surprised, some of these ladies are attending to some of you in this area. Because I was quite surprised that some of my young ladies and young men have not only tended to meet while I was in the hospital for several things, but also my parents. And I could have been proud, walking into the hospital to see some of our graduates from this program and to take care of, you know, some of the most important people in my life. So I'm gonna bring Bethany Stalnaker to you, and she's gonna talk to you about health science.
Hello, Bethany.
Hello.
Most of you know me. I'm in twelfth grade at the high school. I'm in the allied health program, Ms. Love is our teacher. With her help, we learn different skills and we practice them with each other. And she watches us, so it's not like we're doing it wrong, we don't know. She will correct us, and if we mess up, then we keep practicing, practicing, and then we get checked off, is what we call it. So she'll let us do our skill, and she'll make sure everything's right, and then she'll put it on check by her name, and then we'll move on to the next skill. So, right now, we are in the process of everybody getting fingerprinted so we can take our CNA exam. A couple of us got fingerprinted last week, there was about five of us on Thursday. We have four different dates for our exam. I take mine on February twenty-fifth, and we can have like six or seven. And then, when I pass, I will most likely work at a local office or something just to practice and learn more. Right now, I'm dual enrolled at the college and I take medical classes there. And so I'm earning my AS degree, and there are two more courses left before I finish. And then I will become a travel nurse and become an RN in travel places. So I will use what Ms. Love and Ms. Diet taught us to further my, my life. And so my end goal is to become a travel nurse while specializing in pediatrics.
And, I don't think, did you have to, one of our simulate volleyball team members?
Oh, volleyball and softball, and I'm in Beta.
Heavy schedule, some of the best, I tell you.
Busy business.
So we'll continue on with agriculture. And especially to me, because my grandfather was a farmer, a true farmer, sold pigs, and this guy had to feed him most of the time. So it always touches my heart to see young people, to understand how to grow, not only grow, take care of animals, preserve this thing of ours, of doing it the right way. Not as gone as far as looking at genetic traits to grow animals bigger, they're healthier, but that's it. And it just, it's mind-blowing. So we're gonna bring to you Chelsea Cooks and Ethan Draxler.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Chelsea Cooks, I'm the vice president of the Madison County FFA chapter. And I'm here just to inform you about, a little bit about FFA. FFA develops members' potential and helps them discover their talents through hands-on experiences, which gives members the tools to achieve real-world success. The Madison County FFA chapter has a very active chapter that provides us with many different opportunities to learn. So far this year, we've had students who have participated in livestock judging, forestry, tractor driving, and numerous public speaking events. We have hosted community events such as cornhole tournaments and the drive-in movie theater as well. We have members who are participating for land judging currently and as well preparing for the North Florida livestock show and so. We are excited about celebrating National FFA Week, hosting Farm Day, and our spring plant sale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ethan, you should, I may have a few words on you. All right, this next one, as you can tell, I have some personal practices, because I don't mind it. And the one special thing this group has done, we initiated a birthday cake, and they have been on time each time. We've done, we had a birthday cake each month for all of our faculty members and, and the school, and they, they prepared. You know, I, we have to pay for it, but, yeah, we, they make sure that it's on time, and it is delicious. And the last time I think, pound it, and I have a weekish pound cake. So I wanna bring Taylor and Ari, Ari, Ari. I'm gonna up from for culinary arts, and I'm gonna talk to you about culinary arts.
Hi, my name is Kayla Hayes, and this is my friend, Horely. And we're in culinary arts too, I'm in eleventh grade. And so what we do in culinary arts is mainly do, do competitions, cook, and also we also have to book work with that. But still, we have been, we did a competition with mother sauces, which whoever won, when it was higher university, we brought in someone from, I think, outstanding student with that. For the, um, we've done our competition, which sadly I lost. But still, we are, um, we actually, we have a lot of fun. We just did a gingerbread house competition, and it was free for all. We got ice in our gingerbread houses, and we think that was it. And we did a little glowing thing for it. And then we, wow, we had, I have a lot of, I have a lot of fun with the pointer. And we mainly, last year, we did not really like pointing one, so Miss Mona came in, because, Miss Mona came in because we mainly did bookwork, and she kind of decided to handle her own. And I kind of fell in love with it, because I knew how to cook, but then I started learning that we had a bunch of nice cuts of stuff to do. And we have, actually, we have a lot of fun, and we hope y'all come out, because we're doing a hamburger thing this month. And we are making, we're doing hamburgers with lemonade and a dessert side. We have not decided what it is yet, but we hope y'all will come out and come taste our hamburger stuff. We're gonna pie out our hamburgers ourselves, and we're gonna serve them for all y'all. They're already gonna be cooked when y'all get there, because we, we don't want y'all to be waiting on us to cook y'all's hamburger and none of that. Because we know y'all want, we all wanna eat.
But don't cook mine too done.
But you do get to put in your order, you do get to put what you want on it and what, how you want to cook. You do get to put in your order to wait. Earlier, we did an omelet, um, he and myself, Horely, Kayden Horn, and Lama Hicks, Kasari Gallin. We all cooked lamas in front of our teachers, four of them, they paid for it, they came eight. And we gave them bread on the side with drink, which we had a lot of fun, and we hope y'all will come and...
Well, you must invite us every time.
Absolutely, we love food.
I'll bring up fifty cents and I will be right.
We would love to see y'all here, because we have, we have, yeah, a lot of fun, can actually show it out, we have to show our skills to y'all, so. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
This is my question, please. Thank you. And we are on our lunch hour, so we're gonna play awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Did you see, I wanna go back to the, the health science, agriculture, culinary. There's significant things there to learn before we get to pop a robotic power energy. You know, with the health science, I don't know if you get a chance, if you're able to come, I think I said everybody invited, for what we like to call, it's...
The showcase?
The showcase.
Showcase, yes, I was trying to call about the, the true name. But we call, we, we're less than the name of the job worship. And you will see them perform the task. And one of the things that completely blew my mind is when there's a live individual in the bed, this has to happen, if they do a pileup, and they change the bed sheets without moving the individual. And it's quick, it is thorough, and you know, when you deal with people, some, you know, that are sick sometimes or frail, and they very seldom disrupt, and they'll do it with a lot of people, so. I hope you get a chance to come out and see that, that's one of the things that they do in that. Agriculture, like I said, watching, watching a young person back a tractor some twenty-five feet without, you know, I'm fifty-six years old, and I still have a problem backing a trailer up with a truck, but watching them do it with a tractor and a trailer. And tractor operations is remarkable. In culinary arts, people think it's just about cooking, but it's also about how your food is kept at a temperature, how you're constantly checking that temperature, food storage, and cleanliness. Because if you know somebody can get sick quick. So it is something special, watching these young people. And like I said, you're hearing from them, you're not hearing from them. And I didn't want a, 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 I wanted them to be truthful about, and I told the teachers, I didn't choose who they wanted to talk about, and get volunteered. Some of them like to talk, as you see, some of them don't like to talk. So as we move forward...
Let me say something, Mr. Brooks. I had the pleasure of attending that showcase.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was very impressed, and it was very well-attended.
Thank you.
It was very well-attended, I, I enjoyed that, thank you.
We try and incorporate our kids in the decision-making process, because if you don't like being in school, you're not gonna do very well, even on a, even on a job. So we want our students to come there for some of a large percentage of the things that they like. And there's gonna be some things that I tell them all the time, that you don't like as an adult, but we have to persevere. And that's what we're touching on, that great part of life, making sure they persevere and fight through. So as we move forward, we're gonna move forward with robotics, power and energy, and we're gonna have Josh Hill and Ian Rogers show up, and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about that.
Oh, this crew changed to represent for the school, didn't it?
Yes, he did.
Good morning, mostly about, yes, can you sign, I'm Ian Rogers, this is Joshua Hill.
And who's son?
Can you, eight years.
Oh, I know you as Ian Rogers.
I know Candita. I also know your mom.
Being here today, I appreciate y'all for having us here. And I was gonna let y'all get into about robotics, okay? So it's mostly about, it covers many courses, plan for robotic foundations, design essentials, robotic systems, and many more things. These courses can propose teamwork, freedom of creativity, and beneficial challenges. As for the topics, we cover the basics of not only robotics, but we also cover the electrical systems, the flow of electricity, and central functions such as the color sensor detects color. But we also learn C++ or block and I code. The form part will be constructing masterpieces after masterpiece, ground up, nothing but metal motors, cables, and a brain. Now, not a little brain, okay? So to go into depth about C++, we're able to use a programming, well, to use this as a programming language. We program our robots to overcome challenges, whether it be physical or virtual. We also get comfortable with Autodesk and Vensia. Autodesk is a three D computer-aided, uh, design software used to create three D printable parts and bring a virtual concept to life. You can even get a certification in this software through this course. You can also learn how to solve, which is, which itself is simple but very important in more complex systems, especially electrical ones.
He loves me, I'm ready for him.
C++ can also be used in the development of web projects like Google Chrome to the vision of operating systems such as Windows and Linux. Autodesk is a rather popular software among manufacturing industries, so having it is also a great stepping stone for not only technological colleagues, but a pathway into engineering and to design. So why? To speak for Josh and I, we are both intrigued in engineering. Whether it be mechanical, aeronautical, electrical, or just playing with robotics, we both came to the conclusion, and we wanted a challenge that's a real world one. These courses also gave us a broader perspective of the importance of not only engineering for robotics as well. It also shows us the relevance of engineering to other careers, such as a mindset before. Furthermore, allow us to take advantage of the opportunities put forth. For our future events, as of twenty-seventh of this month, Joshua Hill and I, as Beta Club members, will be going to a dekeemis convention and our level to play our ingenuity and creativity. There are also two other young men that are part of this team. Our robotics crew will also be going to two other best competitions among very skilled schools. I would also like to add, robotics has taught us how to strategize and escape efficiently under pressure.
And for power and energy, uh, we do some really cool stuff in power and energy. We build circuits, learn the basics of electricity, like the lights, we learn how those work, down to the most basic components. We learn how to build phone chargers and some three D printing. Yeah.
So you hold our future here for Madison. All right, keep up the good work, because you've lost me already, what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about, but I don't even know how to put it together. I don't even understand a simple telephone, how you can look at me and I'm looking at you and you waiting and not hear you. So keep up the good work and represent Madison.
And I'm positive that's what they'll do. Ian and I had a conversation this morning when he bought his business, took it in company, and he said, electrical, electrical, mechanical engineering, in which I have a close relationship to, because CR four, which is Chris River four, I grew up with when they created, it's a nuclear plant, Chris River, and the decommissioning totally removed because of crap in the back. Growing up, some of my neighborhood relatives were killed constructing that plant. Building, I mean, you know, some of them were valuable and building the plant, completing the plant. And my grandfather worked with the plant. And in the late eighties, there were a large, Chris River High School's enrollment went from seven twenties, my graduation year, to about twelve eighty at the height, before the COVID. Many of those people were from the engineering field. So it's something that's dear to my heart. He said, he said, Josh is, he, I talked to him, Josh took some pretty good pictures for me, aerial pictures of Madison County High School. He talked about drones, he also talked about airborne scanning, and how drones take a part in the service scan. He said he'd probably be interested. But I like having those conversations very much, because I think they're gonna tell you what's true in their heart. We're so proud of these guys and what they represent. Go to next slide. Okay, we're gonna talk to you about Avid. Remember what we said, Chris River High School was looking at, is improving the instruction? Now, that's my job, that's why superintendent put me there. The number one, monitor instruction, number two, monitor student growth, as it's related to that instruction. I think when you have both of those, but hitting on all six cylinders, sometimes I'll have a football analogy or a car analogy, so excuse me. I think we're gonna be okay. We, we won't have to worry about sample testing groups or where we're gonna sit. I think once you have valuable teaching, teach you retention, I think I spoke to you about that before, teach you retention, good teaching, and then you look at how well our students are learning, I think we're gonna be okay. So I bought our brand-new Avid site team coordinator, because we're taking this Avid deep dive, and we're taking it serious. So this is a person who's gonna be totally responsible for the implementation and the monitoring process. I signed me bucks off, this is the person I'm counting on to do this, and we're gonna bring to you Cambera Williams.
Hello. My name is Cambera, I'm a little school counselor at Madison County High School. Contrary to popular views, I'm not a public speaker, but Mr. Brooks has his way of pushing us past what we think we can do. And that's what staff and students, and that's pretty much what Avid is. So basically, Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. And I think the biggest part of that is individual determination. You have to be someone who wants more, who wanna do more. And then us, as the staff, as the educators, we push you guys to that point. And so what I've noticed, I've only been in education for a few years now, but what I've recognized, especially at the high school level, you have your really high kids. You have your kids that you see every day, you know by name, they're going to college, they know what they wanna do already when they come to you. They're asking you for a million transcripts, a million recommendations. And then you have your really low kids, and they're kinda just at school because they have to be at school. And this is just something I have to do, and I'm just trying to get through it. But what we miss is those kids that are in the academic middle. And it's not because they... And it's not because they really don't have an idea, but they just haven't had that push to get to where they're trying to be. And so that's the center of Avid, um, fulfilling the needs of those academic middle kids. Some of them may, um, want to go to college, but they're first generational college students. Or they don't have the money, the means, they don't know where to start. And so Avid is this program and it basically gets those kids out of that middle. It challenges them. They, um, take rigorous courses that they may not otherwise be available for. So we're basically pushing them to be better because they want to be better and, um, because we know they can. Um, and so I was afforded the opportunity to go to the national conference back in December. It was held in Orlando. Firstly, thank you for everyone who's had a role in me being able to be there. It was the best, uh, experience ever. So I went with Ms. Hertz, RAP, and Mr. Rod Williams. And the first day of the conference, it was a Thursday, Friday, like a three-day conference. So the first day of the conference, I'm completely confused because I know what Avid is. You know, I know the bulk of it, but I'm just like, you're, you're there and you're going in and out of sections all day and it's just influx of information. And I'm just like, okay, but where does it start? How does it begin? And so finally, on the second day, um, I went to a session and it was titled, "What Is Avid?" And it basically wrote everything down for you, how it begins, how it's implemented into your school, your role at school council, principal, teacher, student, whatever role you're going to be playing. It literally has, um, requirements for everybody. And, um, so over the three-day conference, I learned so much. Um, there was this one particular school I'm going to forever talk about, Nambokatiega in the Tampa area. Um, and they, in their section, they actually broke down how they're implementing, or how it's already implemented, but how they structured their day-to-day activities with their students and their teachers. Um, it was absolutely amazing. And so I immediately take Mr. Brooks and I'm like, hey, I want to go visit this school. I want to see him face-to-face how they do this. Um, and then one of the things that stood out, every student that's a part of their Avid program, they had a hundred percent acceptance rate into college. Whether they were able to afford to go to college, whether, you know, um, whatever the circumstances were, Avid prepared them to apply. They applied and they got accepted. And so what I found out with a lot of my kids' first engagement, I know that's a big thing on my part, getting to know these students and understand their needs, meeting them where they are, and, you know, pushing them beyond that. And then two, just giving them the opportunities that they may not be afforded. Even if it's just the information and they don't take it, at least they know, you know, where to begin. Um, and so in February, myself and Ms. Hertz, we're going to go to Sandalwood High School. It's located in Jackson, Florida. And it's a demo school for Avid. And basically, we're going to go in for a full day and shadow them, shadow the teachers. Avid is implemented through what's called an Avid elective course. So the kids are still enrolled in their academic classes, but during this Avid elective period is where the Avid curriculum is implemented, um, specifically. So for us, we want to start with our ninth and tenth graders, um, next year. Um, then as they become juniors, we'll add an Avid elective for juniors and then eventually for seniors. But that way, they have four years of curriculum and it's from start to finish, you know, teaching them, um, how to get where they're going. So the recruitment process, um, what we're going to start working on this semester is pulling GPAs, um, looking at those kids who are struggling, trying to figure out why they're struggling in ways that we can better help them, um, on their growth. We're going to look at, um, the courses that they're taking, um, getting them into the honors courses, um, promoting their enrollment for those students. And then from there, we're going to have a student, uh, interview. We don't want to include the parents because like I said, individual determination, we want to make sure it's something that the kids want to do and not something that their parents are forcing them to do. And we also want our, our whole population to understand that college is not for everyone. Everyone is not going to a four-year college. Everyone's not going to a technical school. Some people may be going straight to work, some people may be going to the middle tier. But in that career readiness, it still prepares them, you know, for whatever route they take. And so what me and Mr. Brooks talked about, for me, Avid is kind of like a calipeter. It's just like centralized and then eventually it's going to block them out to, you know, the whole school. So even if you're not specifically in the Avid curriculum, you still have the resources that you need to go wherever, you know, you're trying to be. Um, and so we'll be there, working on that, doing some student interviews and, um, hopefully just increase our population, our college intake, our graduation rate, and get the kids excited about not being in school, but graduating and what they can do after school.
And you say you're not a public speaker.
I was thinking the same thing.
Um, but that just goes to show how excited I am about it. Um, and like I said, I feel like I play a big role in it because I am their school counselor, you know? Um, so they're going to be coming to me and I just want to figure out more ways to be a better servant to our students.
Is, let me ask you a que, you said it's an elective, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is it a certain course of study? I mean, what, what, what is, is it how, teaching them how to study? I mean, what's the gist of, what, what are they?
So, um, typically, like, for example, we're on a, um, Friday, like, they take the class every day. So maybe two days out of the week, it'll be dedicated to Avid curriculum. And that is study skills, how to take notes, um, you know, how to be more organized, things like that. So maybe that's two days. Two of the other days is added tutorials. And you're just going over basically what Avid is, how it can better help serve you, you know, things that you're looking for from the curriculum. And then maybe like on Friday, um, you're going on field trips, you're taking college visits, um, you're learning how to fill out college applications, the FASDA application, things like that. So of course, on different levels, it's going to vary from ninth grade to fourth grade. But that'll be the gist of the course.
Okay, I, I like that idea. Um, and then you said it stood for advanced, advanced individual?
Advancement, um, via individual determination.
Okay, determination.
Sounds very exciting.
Thank you. You gave a very good presentation.
If you've seen, uh, Mr. Stapp, you'll have an understanding of what she talks about. Advancement via individual determination. We are in a world where our students must, not need to, not should, but must be prepared to exist successfully in a global society, you know? Um, so we want that for our kids. And how to do that, we talked about the great part of it. That individual determination, that's a great part. That's following out, getting up, getting up. And that's what the world is today. Refusing to tell someone, let someone tell you what you can and cannot do, but five years through the same, it's longer legal and ethical. And I want to touch on, we, we couldn't get a volunteer, but they, you know, this, you know, was, uh, was given to us and, uh, we want to talk about our deal, but this is the first step. Uh, when it was presented to me, it was the baby, sisters and brothers of our Lions Club. And it is working well. Our students, great interest in the program, uh, they're doing some great stuff. We've got our next presentation. I'll give a representative to come and talk to you about it. But I'm very proud of it and, and, and especially when I see in the midst of it wonderful diversity, the interest in it, and I, I could not be, uh, pleased, more pleased with it. And, uh, this, on this particular day, it's, uh, the fifteenth, and, uh, they had their first annual induction and member ceremony. The Madison Lions Club hosted the event with a dinner. All members were recognized and officers, officers were sworn in by the president of the Madison Lions Club. Uh, congratulations to, and to all the new members and officers of our Lions Club. Go to the next one.
Is that going to be a service club or?
Yes, yes. Similar to the, uh,
Key Club.
Key Club or Lion?
It's similar to Key Club. Key Club is in, within the school, Lions Club is the community.
Yeah, the community. I thought it was like the mall. Okay, Roy was presenting to me. Nice to meet you. Uh, high school, high tech, uh, we attended the River Technical College and covered grocery store, uh, live vote to explore job opportunities. A lot of our kids are, uh, the self-contained kids that are in this class and they, they're looking at particular things that they have, uh, some success with, with job and, eh, job opportunities, but also in the technical aspect. You know, what can I do in the future? What can I learn to be successful, have a successful career? Um, so that was, they have another visit coming up and I believe it's to the, the one in here. And then go to the next one, we'll talk to you about there again. Student Government, uh, yeah, I guess he had to go back too. But he's going to talk about student government and that was our representative, uh, Luke. Uh, student government has been busy and they have been busy working on property for Panetta. But it is also inquired to be, if we could do a co-op with our band and their music department, uh, at our site or either her site, I told them, I said, that's either way I can help, that'd be fine with me. But they've been busy helping Panetta Elementary School, Schools Fall Festival. But breakfast, in these pictures, breakfast was Santa. I hope, uh, this presentation was not too long for you, but I wanted you to get it from a student's view, as I would always, uh, this is what we do, enhance the lives of young people, like I said. And we begin with the end in mind, uh, what do our students need to be successful, not just Madison County, but some of your, your kids may serve, like I said, some of my folks down in Citrus County, her name. Uh, but anyway, we send them prepared. So I hope you, uh, got a first-hand view of what's going on in Madison County, what we're proud of and some of the people who are responsible for it. Um, I'll take any questions you have, if you have any, but I'd like to thank you for your time.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Brooks. I received an education just listening to all them today. And I'm, I'm very impressed and excited about what's going at the high school.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I would also like to say thank you, Mr. Brooks, and the high school students that you have brought with you. But I also like to tell my board members, a lot of these trips that you have been approving, uh, not, you can see the connection. And one trip that you have approved that I'm really proud of and I'm sorry I won't be attending, your culinary department is going down to Orlando to some kind of competition.
Can I go with them?
I, I can't attend, but, um, but that makes, you can see the connection. Some of the field trips are there requesting it. You have been approving. So thank you again for bringing your group with you.
My pleasure. And real quick, I want to tell you the top principle, it's like any dad, you know, when you get a parent phone call home, it's a good one. I got a lengthy email and it's, and I'm too bad it adds to it. Our nursing, uh, nurses, nursing, uh, school went out to Tallahassee. And I got it, you know, when I first opened, I'm like, oh my God, there we go. And he went on to say, it was a part of the hospital that went through pediatrics. And the doctor went on to say, doctor and nurse went on to say, I've not been around. And I'm like, oh boy, here we go. A more professional, well-behaved student.
Wow.
That participated and was excited about what they were doing and learning. And he's talking, my chest sticking out, my chest walking around all day. I tell you, I was, I was pleased. But you have great kids here and, um, I thank you for allowing me to be a part. Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Best Superintendent in the world. I'm not just saying that. Thank you for allowing me.
And thank you for what you're doing and all of your staff.
All right.
So tell your staff, thank you for the work that they are doing. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this, okay, we have, we have some proposed amendments to the agenda.
Give them time to change over.
Oh, okay. Okay, we have some amendments to the agenda. We have a daycare contract. We'll put that under items for individual consideration, five point seven, daycare contract. We also have a class size reduction. We'll put that under items for consideration, five point eight, class size reduction. At this point, I would like to, the board would like to adopt the agenda. Public comment? No public comment today, okay. Um, consent agenda items, four point one, the minutes, four point two fundraisers, four point three allied health program contract with NFC, four point four data sharing agreement with Madison County Property Appraiser. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second. Second by Ms. Hagan. Any questions, comments? All right. By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose. Becky, five zero.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the agenda, please.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll, all in favor? We've adopted the agenda. Okay, good. All right, no comments. Items for individual consideration, five point one, progress monitoring to update. Ms. Thomas?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
You don't have a presentation of this. It's going to be projected behind you. Um, Ms. Joseph asked me to come and give you guys an update on our progress monitoring, specifically for our BSI school, which is means schools that are working closely with DOE to try and improve our school grades. And we have three schools that are working with DOE right now, and that's Greenville, Panetta, and Madison Central School. Um, just want to let you know that, um, some of the results may, um, when you're looking at the percentages and the numbers from PM one to PM two, there may be a little bit of difference because we have some students that have moved to a different school. Um, so their numbers in a particular grade level may have changed, so just so you're aware of that. Uh, we want to start at Greenville Elementary School. We're starting here because this is our school that we've been working really hard, um, to try and improve, and they have been making significant growth. Uh, this first chart is just showing you the growth that they have made. And this is based on the number and the percentage of students that have shown growth since the first progress monitoring, which is back in September to the third, um, I'm sorry, not the third, the second one, which was in December. Uh, what you see there in yellow is actually the number of students. So for instance, if you're looking at first grade, you can see it looks like about twelve students. Um, and then you can see the percentage, which is in green. Um, I wanted to include both the numbers and the percentages, especially at our schools that are smaller, just so you can see. It may seem like only twelve students, but that means a lot if you're at a smaller school. Um, so you can see here, um, that, um, ninety percent, ninety-two percent of kindergartners showed growth from the first progress monitoring they took in September to the one in December. Uh, another example, you can look at fourth grade there. Sixty-two percent of the fourth grade students have shown growth. And this is in the area of ELA, so our, um, English, language arts. Um, so this is just showing you that every grade level at Greenville Elementary has shown growth, um, from progress monitoring that we took in September to the most recent one, which was in December in the area of ELA. So we are very proud of the work that they are doing. Okay, and here's the math growth, the same type of report, um, where you're able to see the number of students in yellow. Um, and then you can see the total number of students as well in blue. And there may be a difference because, like I said, um, if a student started at Greenville and then they went to another school, so they're not included in that total. Or it may be that a student has come to Greenville and they certainly had some enrollment increases. So if they came to Greenville after the first progress monitoring, you won't see them in the results. Um, and we did that just so the school knows the students that are going to count for them. Um, so once again, the percentages are showing us that in every grade level, they made, um, growth. Every grade level. So third grade, um, they're at sixty percent of their students have shown growth from the first progress monitoring to the second one. And that is actually, second and third grade are actually the lowest, um, percentages. So, um, you can see here that they are working and they are moving and that's what we're like. Give you a moment just to finish looking at this. If you have any questions, long way ask me. All right, so, um, these reports, the next, uh, group of reports we're going to look at are going to break it down just a little bit, um, um, in more detail. And also it's going to show us, uh, for kindergarten through second grade, a different progress monitoring test. So for kindergarten through second grade, we actually use the STAR test, um, to report out. And the STAR test looks at, um, the levels a little bit different. They try to see, you know, what student needs urgent intervention, who needs help right now or they're not going to make it. What student needs some level of intervention. They're capable, but they need a little push. Um, students that we need to watch to make sure they're staying and making the adequate progress they need to make. And then it also looks at students who are, um, needing And then it also looks at students who are, um, needing the skills that they need in order to be, you know, proficient by the end of the school year. So you can see here, and this is kindergarten, this kindergarten is early literacy on your left hand side, and then on the right side, you can see their math scores. So for kindergarten, and this one is by the number of students. So for kindergarten, you can see, for example, seven of the students in kindergarten are already at or above grade level. So they're doing really well in kindergarten, um, and you can look on the right hand side, you can see the math and... I'm sorry, I was, I was on the wrong one. Um, that was for the, um, first assessment, for the second one, they actually had fifteen students who showed that they were at or above grade level. So this is showing you the growth from progress monitoring one in September and in the one in December. So in kindergarten, they more than doubled the number of students who are at or above grade level in the area of early literacy. And that just means, you know, their ability to be ready to read, their reading readiness is what we call it. And then if you look at math, similar thing. In math, um, the students that started out as at or above grade level, there were ten students, but that has increased up to thirteen students. So you can see that even in the lower grades, they are making progress. Okay, this, um, next slide is their first grade. You can see here in first grade, similar to, um, similar to kindergarten, where the students are making growth. You see here on first grade, two different tests for their reading test. First grade students, the state asks us to give all first grade students the first administration, which was back in September, early literacy. Greenville Elementary saw that their students knocked early literacy out the ballpark, and they said, hey, we want to give our students the regular STAR reading test, which is a more difficult test. So that's why you see on the very far left side, you see it say STAR early literacy for first grade. But then you also see STAR reading, which is a more difficult test. So even when we gave them the STAR reading test, there were still, um, and this one's by percentage, there were still, about thirty-eight percent of those students who scored at above grade level. So first graders were doing very well, um, so they will no longer take the STAR early literacy, they'll always take the STAR reading report. And then you can see here also from the progress monitoring two, they were able to still maintain, so it's not as though they made a decrease or anything like that. Those first graders are still, about thirty-eight percent of them are showing at or above grade level. And then you can also see the number of students from progress monitoring one, STAR reading, there were about twenty-five percent, no, that's thirty actually, thirty percent of them were in urgent intervention. But if you look at the progress monitoring two STAR reading, no students were in urgent intervention. So all of those students were able to move away from urgent intervention for reading from PM one to PM two, which is awesome. And then you see your math there, um, and it's just showing, um, for the first STAR math, there were a very small percentage of students who were showing that they needed intervention, that's the yellow, um, block. But those students were able to successfully move out of intervention, and now all of their students in first grade were reporting at or above grade level. So they are having some tremendous growth there. Second grade students, um, second grade students, they take the STAR reading and the STAR math. STAR reading is on your left hand side, you can see the progress monitoring one compared to the progress monitoring two. Second grade reading, we did see, um, a little bit of a decline, and it went from seven students needing urgent intervention to one more student, eight students. And so I know that the administration is addressing the concerns, they put some things in place to try to make sure students are not losing ground, but they're able to do even better during the next assessment. On the math intervention, um, I'm sorry, on the math assessment, you can see, um, that the students started off, there were a few of them who, um, were actually on watch. There were students who were on watch, which means there's a blue block. I'm sorry, they weren't these students on watch. The students who were, um, in green, a few of them have dropped down to on watch. So during the first progress monitoring assessment, some, most of them, um, that had a decline, they went down to now we have to place them on watch, which just means, um, we need to put something in place so that they won't fall into needing interventions. So the administration is aware of this, um, she's done an excellent job of identifying specific students by name and working with those students and customizing plans to help them make improvement. This right here is our third grade ELA, ELA for Greenville Elementary. This is a different test, so once we get into third grade, third grade and up, we, we're looking at the FAST assessments, that's the state assessment that the students are taking, from PM one to PM two. So from PM one to PM two, you can see all the way on the far left, um, students, about seventy-two percent of them started off with a level one, but now that has gone down to forty percent of students who scored a level one. And we can see just by looking at the charts, they either moved up to a level two, a level three, and you had one student who maintained at a level four. If you look at your upper right corner, I have the actual number of students there in case you wanted to see what those numbers look like instead of the percentages. But it's just here to show you that the students are making growth and they are moving, and this is ELA for third grade. So, um, that's a significant, um, celebration there for many of them, over thirty percent of them to come out of level one and move up levels, and that's what we want to continue to see. This is the fourth grade ELA, and there is a similar, uh, pattern here where they started off, about seventy-two percent of them started off as level one for the first assessment, but that is down to seventy, so you can see the growth in. You can also see that one student, you see that purple bar all the way to the right? There is five percent, not one, two students, five percent of the students, which are two students in the fourth grade actually moved to a level five, and that is incredible. So this is their fourth grade ELA. Onto fifth grade ELA. We can see here that the students started off, there were about ninety-two percent of them scored a level one, but that is down to eighty percent. And those students who scored a level one, um, the students moved to a level two. So they are, they, they, um, increased by a whole level, and that was two students that moved up to a level two. And then the level three were able to maintain, and this is fifth grade ELA. So for the most part, in all of our grade levels, you can see where students are increasing by entire grade levels and not just making growth, but they're actually moving up a, um, level. And here we have sixth grade, sixth grade started off about seventy percent of them scored a level one in September, but then when they took the assessment in December, um, that dropped to fifty percent. So twenty percent of the students went up to either a level two, and then you can see again here, we have a few students, well, one student, who made a level four. So that student either went from a two to a four or a one to a four, so that's awesome. This is our math, um, for Greenville Elementary School. At the, um, PM one, the first time they took it in September, a hundred percent of the students, um, scored at the level one, but that has declined and has went down to ninety percent, so there's been a ten percent decrease in the number of students who scored a level one. And that student who scored a level one, um, back then in September has moved all the way to a level three. Fourth grade math, we see we started off with ninety-two percent of the students scoring a level one, and that is down to eighty-eight percent, and those students moved up to a level two. Fifth grade, a hundred percent of students initially scored a level one, um, but that is down to eighty, I think it's eighty-four percent. So those two students came out of level one and were able to move up to a level two. This is sixth grade, and sixth grade started off with, um, eighty-five percent of their students at a level one. By December, that decreased down to seventy percent, so fifteen percent, um, of the students have improved from a level one to a level two.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many of these students have been retained? Because if they're starting off with level ones, that's going to be a tough climb for them.
Um, I don't know that exact number for each school, um, but I will say this, the, um, the administrators know who their retained students are.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, and they have...
So they are retaining them still. I, I know different years, it's been a thing where they're not going to be retained and they're going to be, you know, in other words, because I feel like if they're not getting it, they need to get it again, you know, in other words, have another year of it. But, um, I, this, this kind of bothers me, I think, the math especially, you know, with, um, starting off, with so many starting off on a level one.
Right, and it could be, and one of the things we want to keep, um, keep in mind is that this FAST assessment they're taking is the first time this assessment has ever been given. So I'm sure that all over the state, um, there are these types of, um, numbers.
I want, I was going to say something, I know I have children in the school and they got their test results, when they got their report cards, and I have children that are on the honor roll. And these test results are not reflective of their grades every day in class, so I think we're going to see that, like you said, this test is brand new, and I think it's going to be an adjustment, and we, you know, the state may have to make some adjustments, but my, my child that came home with the honor roll was a level two. So I mean, I'm being vulnerable here and telling you, I don't think these reflect the grades that they're receiving in class and, you know, the...
Well, maybe we should also be more concerned with what they're receiving in class, because this is going to be a determining factor right here.
I agree.
If the parents are going to say, how come they're getting...
But I don't think it's just isolated to this, you know, our district.
Right, it's not, and then also the state has already said, um, so the progress monitoring, the last one that we take in May, we're not going to get those results as immediate, as we have been getting these, because with these results, the student takes a test immediately, we can see the scores. That's not going to happen during the third one, because they are going to hold them, because they're going to do some shifting with, um, scale scores and the cuts and all of that, so we do know that they're going to make adjustments.
Right, okay.
I also want to point out, this is a criterion reference test. And what that means is, the students are taking the test, they took the test at the beginning of the year on standards that they would be learning throughout the year. And so the students who scored high at the beginning of the year are actually above...
Advanced, yes.
Because they, the state actually told us, these students have not been taught these standards yet. And so at the beginning of the year, you expect to have a lot of students who are in that level one, but as the year progresses, we need to see them moving to two, three, four, and five.
Well, thank you for that explanation, I didn't realize that.
Any more questions? Okay, so this is our next BSI school, Pineda Elementary. We started here with their kindergarten, and keep in mind kindergarten, they take the STAR test, and they start off with the STAR early literacy test. You can see here that eight of the students during PM one, nine students rather, were already at above grade level, and then to PM two, thirteen students were at above grade level. So once again, you can see that the students are making progress. First grade, um, STAR early literacy or reading levels. And STAR early literacy was the test, just like I said, at Greenville, um, that was a reading readiness test. And so Pineda also has some students that did so well, they wanted to give their students the regular reading test, which is why you see, um, here that, um, it may look a little different. But you can see for the early literacy, for the students that took it, um, there were fifteen of them who were at or above grade level. Those students who were at or above grade level then, if they had a score of an eight fifty-two, we then gave them the STAR reading test. So if you can look on your far right, you can see, um, those students who were moved to take the STAR reading, they still did well on the STAR reading test. These are second grade students. You can see about sixteen of them were already at or above grade level, and then that increased to seventeen students. Uh, at Pineda, they just have one, um, one first grade, one second grade class, so you can see the class is doing very well. And here, we're at third grade, um, looking at third grade ELA and just referencing what Ms. Hill was just saying. Keep in mind that when we look at the FAST assessment, this is, um, benchmarks that they're supposed to learn during the school year, and they haven't been taught yet, so if they come in knowing it, awesome, but we want to see the growth. So for progress monitoring one, um, you can see there, they started off at about, um, twenty-eight percent students who scored a level one, but then by progress monitoring two, it was down to twenty, it was like about twenty-two percent. So you can see that those students have moved out of level one, they're growing, they either moved to a level two or a level three. And if you look on your far right, someone moved up to a level four, so that student is really, uh, being successful. Have one student that moved to a level four. So very proud of the progress they are making, and this is in the area of reading, ELA. And here's our fourth grade, and it's just the same, and the trend that you want to be looking at and paying attention to is making sure that from PM one to PM two, you see the red column getting smaller. Red column getting smaller, because when the red column gets smaller, that means the students are showing growth, they're going up to a level two, three, four, or five. And you can see in this case, we have one student who went to a level five. So this is, once again, like Ms. Hill said, these are standards the students haven't even been taught yet. So if you score a level five and once you haven't been taught, yes, so that's awesome. And you can see that, um, several more students moved to a level four, which is great as well. And that's why it may look like, if you're looking at this chart, it may look like, well, we don't have as many students that are showing level three. Well, they're not showing level three because they moved to a four and a five. No complaints there, right? All right, and so for fifth grade, um, you see the same thing, the number of students who scored a level one on PM one has declined, and that is awesome, that's what we want to see. And once again, we have a student who moved into a level five, and we have more students who moved to a level four. So that is why it appears like, um, the students in level three, um, it seems like there weren't as many, but there weren't as many because they moved to even higher than a three. Here's our sixth grade, and sixth grade for Pineda is just the same as, um, our third and fourth grade, where we see the level of one students, students who scored a level one rather. You see the percentage of them, um, decline, and they're actually increasing, and they're scoring levels three, four, and five. Here's our math for kindergarten. You can see for the STAR math, when they took it back in September, only eight students were at or above grade level, but when they took it again in December, that doubled. So sixteen students are now at or above grade level. And first grade here, um, you can see in first grade, um, there was actually one student who, um, kind of made, you know, retrogress a little bit, and that student, um, went down to on watch. Not that they need urgent intervention or intervention, but just means that the teacher needs to make sure that, you know, they're supporting them, they're providing everything that they need so that they can get back at or above grade level. And here we have second grade, you can see that from the first progress monitoring on the left for math, students started off at each category, there were some in urgent intervention, some who needed intervention, and some who were on watch. But by this most previous, um, assessment that was given in December, those students, with the exception of a couple in... the exception of a couple in urgent intervention, have moved to be an at or on grade level. So the student that was on intervention, the student that was on watch were able to come out. Third grade math for ELA, you can see here that they started off with about, almost ninety percent of the students scored a Level One, but that dropped down all the way to thirty-eight percent. So you can see that's a huge gain those students have made, scored a Level Two. And you can also see that many of them, three, well, three of them, which can be many depending on, especially with our numbers, three of them moved into a Level Three. So they may have come from a Level One or Two and moved up to a Level Three. Fourth grade math is just the same thing. They started off with about eighty-two percent of the students scored a Level One, and that decreased by fifty percent. So fifty percent of those students have moved on to a Level Two, Three, or Four. Here we have fifth grade, and fifth grade, almost about, about the same thing. Well, about thirty-two percent of the students who scored a Level One at the beginning in September have now moved out and they've scored a Level Two, and some of them have even scored a Level Three. Sixth grade math for Pineda, I want you guys to really pay attention to that blue column. So you can see here, an amazing forty percent, they, when they started the school year off, there were no, there weren't any students scoring a Level Four. But now forty percent of those students scored a Level Four in math. So you can see that they are making some significant gains in both ELA and math at Pineda for all students. Okay, are y'all ready for the big school?
Yes.
Okay, let's go.
That's longer than I would have.
Okay, here we go, here we go. So Central School, ELA, so for our kindergarten students, the STAR Reading and STAR Math. So you can see here, they took the STAR Early Literacy at, they didn't have any students that moved up to the STAR Reading, so that's why that middle column is empty. But you can see from the STAR Early Literacy, they had about fifty-five percent of their students who were able to score at or above grade level, and that is on this most recent PM Two that we took in December. And you can see for math, they had about sixty-two percent of their students scored at or above grade level for math for kindergarten. And for Central School, for some of them, because of the nature, I didn't have enough time to go in and work the PM One and PM Two. So a lot of this, you'll see their PM Two data, but it's growth as well. So you can see here for first grade, about forty-two percent of the students show at or above grade level for the STAR Literacy. And then you can also see for the math, they had about seventy-eight students. So the students are definitely making growth. So second grade here, we have second grade reading, our second grade reading is showing that there were about thirty-eight percent of the students who showed at or above grade level. Not as many students moved out of urgent intervention in the second grade. But once again, every school, all the administrators have plans in place, and they all have built-in intervention time, where they are targeting student skills in the areas they need help in, and trying to make them show growth and improvement. But you can see for the math, about fifty percent, well, a little more than fifty, about fifty-one percent of those students showed that they were at or above grade level. And there were a lot less students who needed urgent intervention in math in second grade than those who needed it for reading. So here we have our third grade ELA for Central School. This one is going to show you PM One to PM Two. So you can see that they started off with about seventy-two percent of the students scoring a Level One for third grade ELA, but then that number decreased to sixty percent for the second PM. So those students, they increased either by one grade, one Level Two, or Three. Some of them may have gone from a One to a Five. So we do have, if you look all the way to your right, you got a student who, I'm not sure why it's not captured at that top, it must just be an arrow on my side. If you can see the little purple slipper, that lets you know that someone scored a Level Five, which is great. And once again, here, you can see for the fourth grade, it's about the same thing. Those students moved out of scoring a Level One, they moved to probably not the Level Two, because you can see there are a lot less students in Level Two as well, but they probably moved to a Three, a Four, or the Five. So the students are showing some great, great, great growth. And fourth grade for ELA, from progress monitoring one to progress monitoring two. And we have our fifth grade ELA, fifth grade, and we have the same kind of thing here. You can see they start off with about sixty-two percent of students who scored a Level One, that went down to about fifty-five percent of students. And those students either scored a Level Two. You can see the number of Level Twos kind of just went up just a little bit, but more so, you see more of them moved to a Level Three, Four, and then the Level Five student, two of the Level Five students, I'm hoping that those are the two that kind of fell back into a Level Four, but obviously we don't have names. But mind you, the administrators are looking at student names. So although we are looking at data, they're looking at the names, so they know which of their students need another push, or need to get additional support, or whatever type of interventions or enrichment they need in order to either show their growth or make the same progress again. Sixth grade ELA, you can see here, there was a decline in the number of students who scored a Level One to, during their first progress monitoring assessment, to those who scored a Level Two. And you can also see that there was an increase, especially in students who scored a Level Four. So that is absolutely amazing, more students scored a Level Four. So they may have come from those who scored a Level Three, because you can see it went down a little bit. Or it may have come from someone, they have scored a Two and now a Level Four. And now we're up to seventh grade. You can see once again that the students started off, there were more of them who scored a Level One, but now those students are moving into scoring Level Two, Three, Four, and even a Level Five. If you look at the top, it shows you the number of students, four students scored a Level Five for ELA in reading in seventh grade. And that is mind blowing, absolutely nothing. Eighth grade, you can see here, eighth grade, same thing, we have three students who scored a Level Five on the assessment that they were given in December. We didn't have any students score a Level Five when they first took this assessment, so that is, that's a great thing. And you can also see that the number of students who scored a Level Three increased as well. And there were, there were also, there was also an increase in the number of students who scored a Level One. But the thing that I want you also to remember is that there may have been some students absent during the assessment, as you can see, the numbers are different. So for PM One, there were ninety-two students. PM Two, there were eighty-eight students. And so it also had to factor in how many students were currently enrolled at the time. Here we are for third grade math. Third grade math, they started off about ninety percent of the students scored a Level One, and that was down to almost seventy percent. So that's a big decrease in the number of students scoring a Level One. Those students were able to score a Level Two, Three, and we even have a student that scored a Level Four on progress monitoring test Two that they took in December. So very good job for the third grade math at Central. And then also, we have our fourth grade math here. About ninety, ninety-eight percent of the students initially scored a Level One, but that dropped down to eighty percent. So that's almost a twenty percent decrease in the number of students scored a Level One. And you can see that they either made a Level Two, and then we also had a few students who scored a Level Three. Fifth grade, fifth grade, same thing. You can see that there is a lot of growth, because the number of students scoring, who scored Level One at the beginning of the year in September has declined. We have a lot more students who are scoring Level Two. And in this case, we also have students who scored a Level Three and a Level Four. The Level Four, I know the blue line looks very, barely visible, but there was one student who scored a Level Four on their second progress monitoring test. And there were eleven students who improved to a Level Three. And that is great. Sixth grade mathematics, we have eighty-two percent of the students started off as a Level One, but that is down to sixty-two percent, so that's a twenty percent decrease. And those students were able to go on to score either Level Two or a Level Three. Seventh grade math, same thing here. They started off at about seventy-two percent of the students scored a Level One, but that was down to fifty-two percent scored a Level One. So twenty percent of those students have moved on to a Level Two, a Level Three. And then you can even see that eight of those students scored a Level Four, and one student scored a Five. So some significant growth once again, and especially leveling up all the way to a Four and a Five for seventh grade math at Central. And finally, eighth grade math. Eighth grade math started off with about eighty-four percent of their students scoring a Level One, that was down to seventy percent. From that, those students were able to score a Level Two, a Level Three, and we even have Level fours. So you can see once again that the students are making growth from progress monitoring that they took in September to the one that they just took in December. And the schools, and I know I am, and I know you guys too, and the community, everybody else is looking forward to what they're going to do on the third progress monitoring assessment.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. Thank you. When will the next progress monitoring be, take place? When will the next progress monitoring take place?
Now, we do have, some of our schools have been selected for the writing field tests. The writing is going to be a field test this first year. And so we have Central, fourth grade through eighth grade, they've been selected, so they'll be taking the writing test in April. And then we have, I think it's ninth grade for James Madison and tenth grade for Madison High School. So those are the only grade levels that'll be taking the writing test in April, and everybody else will be taking their ELA and math and stuff in there.
Okay, yeah, you said the next progress monitoring is in May?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there's nothing, will that determine, what, what's, what's the determination from that? Will that decide if they go on to the next grade, or?
No, ma'am. So this first year of progress monitoring from the state, they're, they're not using it for any type of retention purposes or anything like that. And that's just because it's the first year. Now, they've already said, next year, they're going to be doing things a little bit differently. But for this first year, it's for informational basis, and for them to establish, I guess, their cut scores and grades and all of that.
Right, basically, when they took it in September, though, that was strictly on grade level, that material was on grade level, right? That's something they weren't exposed to in the previous grade.
That's right. And every time they take it, it's always going to be on grade level.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
On grade, okay, yes. All right, well, thank you for that information. Any questions? All right. Five point two discipline update, Ms. Hill?
Y'all have a copy of her report, I'm going to give you that update, the chart, the two-page
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Joseph asked for me to put together a discipline report for you, comparing August to December last year to August to December this year. And so that's what you have in front of you. You can see that at Madison County High School, the total number of referrals last year in the first semester was nine hundred and fifty, this year is down to four eighty. You can see that the major difference there is, on the first page, which was last year, they had five hundred and eighty-five excessive tardies. This year, they have handled tardies a different way, whether, rather than writing referrals, they just assign like lunch detention or something like that. For Madison County Central School, grade six to eight, last year in the first semester, they had six hundred and thirty referrals. This year, they are down to four hundred and eighty-seven. In K to five, last year, there were four hundred and sixty-seven referrals. This year, there have only been two hundred and twenty-five referrals. So there's a drastic drop there in grades K to five. You also have the numbers there for each of the elementary schools, and you can see those numbers, you know, they're dealing with a lot less students, so of course, there are a lot less referrals. But overall, last year, first semester, for our traditional schools, we had two thousand one hundred and sixty-four referrals. This year, we have only had thirteen hundred and one. We do attribute part of that to our, our new MTSS system that we put in place, which gives the teacher, all the teachers' tools to use in the classroom before generating an office referral. And so we think that is, you know, a, a big part of the reduction. We also, you know, feel like dividing the Central School up into two schools has also helped be able to manage behaviors better. So we're seeing less referrals, of course, come from that school. So this is just first semester data. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask you a question. This, where it says down there toward the bottom, teacher referral. Now, does that mean, so, so that's, a teacher's having a problem in the classroom, so they're going to refer the student?
That could be a number of things. It could be that the teacher assigned, like, in, at some schools, the teacher can assign the student to go to detention, you know, for the rest of the period, or, or something like that. So that means the teacher assigned it, not the...
That didn't go through the office, then?
Right, right.
Okay.
But it also shows that with our MTSS system, the teachers are handling the situations better, rather than immediately meeting out punishment.
That's right.
And that's, you know, you, you want the teacher to have the power in the classroom to manage the classroom. And so when, when, you know, an administrator has to come in to do that, it, it does take away some of the teacher's power. And so, and I know that it, it's been a, a challenge to learn a different system. But it, it really does help the teacher in the long run to, to be able to manage those All right, thank you.
Thank you for getting that together, Ms. Hill. Five point three field trips, Ms. Joseph?
Madam Chair, we have the following field trips. Pineda Elementary, fourth grade, we would like to go to Mission St. Louis on February And she's got a loss of the kids. The high school jazz band would like to go to Ricken High School on February sixteenth. These are day trips. These are day trips. Uh, the high school band also would like to go to Leon High on March fourth. The, uh, high school, what's this, FFA chapter? They've got some kind of competition down in Cheating on January thirty-first. The high school FFA, and this is one of the things that the group was talking about. Uh, they also have some more competition down in Tampa, the state fair, on February ninth through tenth. And those are the student field trips that we have proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the field trips?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the, uh, field trips as listed.
We have a motion by Ms. Knight, second.
I second the motion.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Five-zero, Becky.
Ms., uh, Chair.
Five point four, staff travel, Ms. Joseph.
Okay, our staff trips are as follows. We've got one request from, to attend the university principal preparation initiative convening January twenty-sixth through twenty-seventh. And on the, your request, we have Ben Killingsworth and Robin Hill, and I need to change that name to Shirley Joseph.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's the only staff trip that's being requested at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Is there a, a motion to approve the staff travel?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the staff to travel.
We have a motion by Ms. Hagan.
I second.
Second by Ms. Knight. By a show of hands, all in favor? Becky, four-zero. Five point five, personnel changes, Mr. Killingsworth.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I apologize to y'all, but I don't have a multiple-page slideshow for y'all today, so it's gonna be short and sweet.
Thank you.
But I promise you, next, next board meeting, I'll have you one, okay?
Okay.
Uh, if we would, I have four names, uh, from the instructional aspect that we're asking for your approval. One is at the high school, which is Mr. Wentworth. And then we have three that will be at Central, uh, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Bushnell, and Ms. Katie Roberts will, will be the one that's gonna be the media specialist. However, on hers, that is pending replacement for her because, you know, she's currently a teacher over at Pinata. So, you know, I gotta make sure we got our, our teachers in place before I do that, but, but we'll have that worked out. Uh, so those are the four there. Then we have some, uh, in-house transfers. Uh, Ms. Scott and Ms. Davis have transferred from Greenville, one to Central, one to Lee. And then we have, uh, Ms. Davis and Ms. Tipton from Central going to Greenville. And then we have Mr. Strauter going from Central to the high school. And then we will have Ms. Hawkins, that was the secretary for, uh, transportation and maintenance, that will be moving over into the, uh, insurance and benefits. Same office, just different job. We also have two non-instructional recommendations, uh, within the food service. One is Mr. Jones at high school, and then Ms. Willey at, uh, the Central School that will be joining us. And then I have, uh, two under the leave of absence that will need to extend, that being Ms. Frazier and Ms. Akins. They will just be extending the time that, that they've had. And unfortunately, Ms. Denson, uh, will be leaving us on the twentieth of this month to pursue a job elsewhere. And we have two student tutors, uh, Addison and Marcus, that are student tutors that will be helping us, uh, during the year, and that being like Pinata, Greenville, Central. And then one substitute custodian, which will be Ms. Davis, that we're recommending. And then fortunately, that's all that I have for you today, but trust me, I'll have a nice little list for you coming next, in February.
No, we don't.
Thank you, Mr. Killingsworth.
You are so welcome. I asked the y'all for...
We don't need any other people resigning.
Ma'am?
We don't need any other people resigning.
No, ma'am, we don't. We're trying to bring some more on.
Yes, please.
No. Trust me, I wish we didn't.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I move to approve the personnel changes.
We have a motion by Ms. Thompson, second. Ms. Hagan, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Becky, four-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five point six, finance report, Ms. Raina.
Wow, it's been a pretty full day. First, we hear about all the great things the high school kids are doing. Then we hear about all the progress our lower-performing schools are making. Then we hear about all the reductions in our, uh, disciplinary and the good progress MTSS is doing. We're bringing on more people, and now we're gonna talk about how we finance that.
Yes.
How we're paying for everything. Okay, so, we'll start with the finance report. I'm gonna follow up with a, another little mini kind of training, but finance report first. If you look at the general fund, uh, we've had almost, uh, eleven million dollars in, uh, revenues come in this year, this, uh, month, and about ten-and-a-half million in expenses. We like it when it's a positive like that, but don't, don't get your hopes up yet because, um, sometimes the early payments of taxes kind of artificially inflate things to make 'em look like they're getting there, but they're not quite there yet. So, we have taxes that have come in, that we've got about seventy percent of our taxes in, and we're only halfway through the year. So, you need to keep that in mind when these numbers jump up and down. We will be paying the teacher salary increase this, uh, month, at the end of the month. That's going to impact the finance, the general fund. Uh, we've still, we have some positive progress on food service. I'll talk about that in a second. Um, we did get the recalibrated survey, too, and I'm gonna talk about that, it's kind of my follow-up in the FTE. And, uh, we still are having some increased liability in insurance and in workers' comp. So, we gotta keep an eye on all of those things. Right now, it's, if, if you're looking at just for this month only, you're looking at, uh, fund balance at twenty-one-and-a-half percent. But you're seeing the unrestricted, the, the money that you have, um, your unassigned fund is still staying at the same level. Again, keep in mind, it's gonna go up and down each month. Now, we have, uh, debt service. We have to pay around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year toward that debt for the high school. We've got about sixty-five percent of the money saved up, so we're doing good there. We have to get an average of around twenty-one thousand a month there, so we took in twenty-five-seven this month, and we only had eighty, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars out. So, we're doing good getting the money ahead so we can pay that bill. Uh, capital funds, the capital outlay, we're looking at, uh, a million, one, almost a million, two, that we took in revenue this month, and about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand in expenses. Again, we love to see those positive numbers, but keep in mind, seventy percent of the money has come in, we're halfway through the year. Food service. Why we've been holding our breath about food service, it does look like they are making progress. We're getting little pots of money coming in, we, we love to hear that. Uh, we, they're up almost forty-two thousand from last month into their, uh, fund balance, so we love to hear that. And we are writing a small grant to get some more, uh, worn equipment replaced, so we're, we're excited about that. And surprisingly, we got a supplement, a supply chain supplement of forty thousand on January fourth, which helped this a lot. You're not seeing that reflected in this report, but you will in the next one. So, we've got our fingers crossed, food service is stepping up, and we're hoping that, uh, if general fund has to, uh, do that, has to supplement them, it won't be that much. So, we're excited about that. Forty-two hundred, those are your title grants, these are your covered doughnuts. Okay, you got a million in and a million out. It's the way it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a wash. Four, four-four-twenty, that's your first, uh, ESER grants, that's just there for information purposes, 'cause we do have some revenue there. Your four-four-thirty, that's your second pot of, uh, ESER money, the big pot. Hundred thousand in, a hundred thousand out, pretty even balanced. Four-four-four-zero, uh, second pot of ESER two money, sixty-two in, sixty-two out. Four-four-five-oh, I said four-four-four-oh, it didn't slid by me, no, that, four-four-four-oh, I'm sorry, sixty-two in and sixty-two out. Four-four-five-oh, a million-five in and a million-five out. Again, staying steady. We're getting our money collected as soon as we spend it. Uh, and, and the four-four-six-oh, we've got eighty-five in and eighty-seven out, but we've got a couple thousand in transit right now. So, that, that's the balance of the financial report. Now, before, I don't know if you wanna vote on the financial report, but I've got another little thing about FTE I wanna share with you, so...
We need to go ahead and vote it.
Go ahead, okay.
Madam Chair.
Is, is there, is there a motion to approve the finance, financial report?
Madam Chair, I move that we present, we approve the financial report as presented to us.
I second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hagan, second.
I second.
Second, okay. Second by Ms. Knight. Sorry. All in favor, raise your hand. Four-zero, Becky.
Thank you. I hope that my little notes and everything are helping make this a little more palatable when we talk about it.
And I'm gonna pass this out, pass it on each direction.
Okay, we're gonna have a little, uh, mini workshop here on FTE, and what FTE looks like. And I'm trying to keep this very simple, because it gets to be pretty complex when you're dealing with it at the level that I have to deal with it. But if you, FTE means full-time equivalent. That means one kid in a seat, a hundred-and-eighty days, however minutes they have to be for the whole year. If you look at the children that are in grades K through three, they have to be in the school classroom seven-hundred-and-twenty hours to earn one FTE. That's forty-three thousand minutes, that's a hundred-and-eighty days, at two-hundred-and-forty minutes per day. All pre-K to three have to be, not pre-K especially, K through three. Pre-K is usually at a half a day, we're funded for half a day, but we do, in most cases, keep those children the other half of the day, and with the general fund supports that other part of the day. For the kids that are grades four through twelve, they have to be in class nine-hundred hours a year, fifty-four thousand minutes, a hundred-and-eighty days, three-hundred minutes a day. So, if you look at that, that's about six fifty-minute periods, right, Rob? Okay. All right. There, twice a year, they, they take a census, if you will, a survey from the Department of Education of the children in those classes, so they can kinda see where you are. If you're still looking at the first page, keep looking at, you probably have two, you have two in front. If you look at the first page and you look at the pink area, when we had our final FTE last year for twenty-one, twenty-two, we ended up with two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one-point-two-four FTE. One-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine of that was with the traditional schools, six-hundred-and-thirty, uh, of that, almost six-hundred-and-thirty-one is pass-through. That means comes to the charters, comes to, uh, Florida empowerment, comes to the virtual schools. Okay, so it passes through us, but we had seventeen forty-nine. In mid-March, they do a report at the Department of Education level, and they estimated that we would be at two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-seventy-six FTE for this year. Then they did another look at it in July, and they kept those same numbers. But now in October, when they did the October survey, our numbers actually, and we just got those this week, so, or last week, so our numbers actually ended up at two, let me, let me back up, 'cause I'm gonna talk about that on the other side. If we do everything exactly the same in survey two as we do in survey three, our numbers would be approximately two, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-three FTE. So, you can see from the end of twenty-one, twenty-two to what we're projecting at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three. At the best scenario we can see right now, we're still looking at a loss of FTE. And we're looking at a gain of FTE, but we're looking at a loss for the traditional students, for the traditional schools, and a gain for the pass-through. If, uh, Mr. Carroll was still here, he'd see the, the tree getting watered. Because, because all these kids equal leaves on the tree. Now, if you turn the document over on the other side, you're gonna see how FTE counts during the school year. On the very far left, you're gonna see the school names, and then you're gonna see what the first calculation in October of last year was for each of those schools. Then you're gonna see the second calculation, which happens in February. So, for the high school, the first calculation in twenty-one, twenty-two was two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-four-six FTE. In the second calculation, it was two-hundred-and-eighteen-point-oh-seven. So, you can see that things usually don't stay exactly the same from one survey to the next. Total, they had four-hundred-and-forty-six-point-fifty-three total FTE for that school. This year, the first FTE, you can see, for the high school again, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-two-point-thirty-six. That's a good sign, 'cause the FTE is coming up if we compare the two first calculations. However, when we get down to the bottom of that, where it says total, under what we just got in our recalibrated numbers, we're only going up about two FTE total. If you look a little further and you look at the traditional share, last year, at this same time, we had eight-hundred-and-eighty FTE. This year, at this time, we have eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine FTE. So, you can see the traditional share is going down. And, and last year, uh, the pass-through was six-hundred-and-thirty FTE. We're projecting that it's going to be six-hundred-and-seventy-four FTE this year. That includes empowerment, virtual, and the charter schools. Now, sheet, I didn't pass you out, I think the superintendent wants to talk about this is comparison one-to-one, comparison one-to-one of the FTE from the first calculation last year to the second calculation.
Ms. Raina, can you, uh, continue with this conversation? And do a brief statement about that FTE is not necessarily a student.
Yes. And I, and I can tell you that, because we're looking at enrollment numbers right now, and if we look at all of our enrollment right now that was reported in the survey window, we're looking at two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy students, students. If we're looking at, if we take what we got in our first FTE and double it exactly, we're only looking at close to twenty-four-hundred FTE. So, you're looking at twenty-eight-hundred students, twenty-four-hundred FTE. So, you've got a big...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I'm looking at this, I wanna, it's, it's probably a dumb question, but the first column you said it was...
No question, a dumb question.
Thank you. The first column, you said it was October of twenty-two. So, that was this past...
No, she says the first column is October of twenty-one.
Oh, that, okay.
It's the first column is October of twenty-one. The second column is February of twenty-two. And the last column is October of twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. I put twenty-two.
So, if I take the last column, uh, of what we just got, and I double the number exactly, which you see doesn't always turn out exact, we're going from twenty-eight-hundred students to twenty-four-hundred FTE. So, that's why I say, those kids have gotta be in class, they've gotta have attendance taken, they count for those numbers. Now, this last sheet I just passed out, and I want you to also, I'm gonna preface this, on this last sheet I just passed out, it took October twenty-one and compared it to October twenty-two. And you'll see the differences off to the side. And you'll see the differences off to the side that are not boxed in. You'll see the differences. So, you'll see from October to October, the high school went up 3.9 FTE. Central went down 46.95 FTE. Part of that is because the board voted to move grade six out to the outlying schools. But if you look at the plus 7.13, the plus 6.46, and the plus 7.99 that came up in FTE for those three outlying schools, it does not equal the 45. So, in our efforts to move the sixth grade out there, we still have falling enrollments. So, just to be cognizant of, some of the moves that we make may not always come out the same way we thought they might. If you look at the charter schools, the three primary charter schools that we have, James Madison, Creative Arts, and Waypoint, you see that their FTE enrollments, their FTE is going up a little. Bottom line, anticipation projected, roses, crystal ball today, we're going to be down between 30 and 40 FTE by the end of the year. Now, you go back to this second page here, at the very bottom of the second page, there's a, when they give us FTE from the state level, they try and make sure that every district in the state gets the same kind of a break on how much that money is worth. So, right now, one FTE is worth $4,587. Okay? But because Madison County does not have the same cost of living that Broward County does, they take ours and they take about 9% away from ours because we don't have the same cost of living. So, our differential, that they actually take that 4,500 and they multiply it times .9189, is actually 4,200. But for a district like Broward, that has a 1.0196 differential, they're going to get a little bit more money. But that's based on the cost of living. Miami date is about 1.0156. So, just so you know, that it's not all, it's not always what it looks like in numbers here. Now, any questions on the mini workshop? Did I totally confuse you?
I appreciate the mini workshop.
I do, too.
Okay. I would just, we can keep referring back and forth of this, and when we get the third calculation in February, we'll know maybe about March, April, about after spring break, we'll kind of know what those numbers are, and then we can revisit this.
I'm going to send you an email about this and the superintendent, but right now, what I've got in mind, when does the ESER money come to an end?
September 20...
The ESER II money comes to an end September 30th, 2023. That was the middle set of ESER money.
It's the middle ESER.
Yeah. Okay. The ESER III money, which is ARC, expires September 30th, 2024.
Okay. All right, what I'd like to have, I mean, not for tonight, of course, but I'd like to have a timeline with the ESER. I'd like to know what's going to come out of it, what is an ongoing...
In other words, I want the whole picture.
I know we've got many grants in there, and many positions were created from that. So, I want to see the whole picture of this, you know, what, because you've brought this up quite a bit about the ESER is only going to come to an end, and, you know...
It's a funding cliff.
It's, we're going to go off the cliff.
So, we're meaning to have...
Right now, I want us to start preparing for that. And I'd like to start by a timeline, and what money is going to come out of it, are there, in other words, what has to happen before the end? If it involves people, we need to make sure they are very well aware of it, which I think we've already discussed, of saying that, you know, you were hired for this grant, and it's going to expire, blah, blah, blah. In other words, I don't want us to sit here and just let everything, and then all of a sudden, it's, we're faced with it. So, I think now is the time to start focusing on it seriously.
We can do that, but remember, it's not, we're not targeting people, we're targeting positions.
No, no, I know, positions, and you're right. But I think in the past, and not with anyone probably even here, but the board has, not the board, but positions are created during these, for these grants, and then when it expires, well, it's, you know, what are we going to, in other words, they may still hang on, you know...